Good evening. We'll open the meeting of the Union County Board of Commissioners on Monday, November the 4th, 2019. And as usual, we'll open our meeting with an invocation. And Commissioner Frank Aitken, if you'll help us with that, please, sir.
Bow with me if you care to. Gracious Lord, we thank you for this time that we can come together in a county and in a country and a state that we love. And Lord, we pray that you will lead, guide, and direct all of our actions tonight. May they be pleasing to you. Give us the discernment and the wisdom to make decisions that are best for all involved. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Next, we have a public hearing on CZ 2019-13, Twin Lakes Senior Living Facility Amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you stated, this is an amendment to the previously approved Twin Lakes Senior Living Facility. The Twin Lakes Senior Living Facility rezoning request was approved by the Board of County Commissioners on February 18th, 2019. That request was for a 182-unit age-restricted living facility. The approved plans called for that facility, its associated parking, access requirements, amenities, conditions, et cetera, all the things that were shown on the approved site plan and the approved conditions. One of the written conditions and what was shown on the conceptual plan showed a building with 182 units at 70,000 square feet. According to the applicant, the plans and conditions should have read 70,000 square feet per floor, which would yield a building size of around 210,000 square feet. The approved plans show a three-story building, which is still what is proposed, and the applicant indicated that this was an oversight, and the approved conceptual plans are still what is proposed to be built. The number of units is not changing. It's still a 182-unit facility. I'll just run through this slideshow really quickly. These are, you've seen these before. You saw these at the original application for the unit, but these are some photographs of the site. The one on the top left is the site itself. The middle is looking at the roundabout at Waxaw Indian Trail Road and Beulah Church Road. And the one on the right is looking down Beulah Church Road. The site is on the right-hand side. This is the, this is the site that you saw back in February of this year. And I've got another plan that I'm going to bring up just in a second. This is an image, so I can't really zoom in on it, but I want to zoom in. You can see here where they've amended it, and you'll see that a little bit clearer later where it says "per floor." Conceptual plans and the amenities remain the same, with the addition of the "per floor" on that conceptual plan. The access to the site is still the same. It's coming off of a main entrance road to a neighborhood, and the technical correction is to add "per floor." This is the overall site plan. Lee, you've seen this before as well. This is the Twin Lakes neighborhood, which is a by-right cluster subdivision, and this is the corner. And that's where I was talking about how it's getting its access. So it's accessing from an internal street in that neighborhood. Wesley Chapel, Weddington are adjacent to this. It's an undeveloped piece of property. There's nothing there currently. However, as I stated, the subdivision, Twin Lakes subdivision, is approved, so it will be under development shortly. The property is zoned. Most of it's zoned R-40. This corner is R-4. This was not something that our GIS has picked up yet, because it is fairly recent, so it still reflects R-40 on GIS. But that corner, where the facility is, is zoned R-4 based on the previous rezoning request by the applicant. No major environmental features on the site where the Twin Lakes Senior Living Facility is going. There is a big stream in the neighborhood itself, and that was accounted for during the site plan and, site plan review for the subdivision. As far as transportation network, Waxaw Indian Trail Road, about 9,400 vehicle trips a day, 1,900 vehicle trips a day along Beulah. That's based on 2016 numbers. I do want to... So, number one at the top of this page is really what's being changed. The previous one said the principal building on site shall be limited to a maximum of 70,000 square feet and 182 rooms for the sole purpose as an age-restricted senior living facility. This amendment would change it to what you see here. The principal building on site shall be limited to a maximum of 210,000 square feet, 70,000 square feet per floor, and 182 rooms for the sole purpose as an age-restricted senior living facility. That's the only change that's proposed as part of this amendment. So, that was changed in the conditions and on the site plan. So, the site plan reads very similar to that. It says 70,000 square feet per floor. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. I think the applicant is here. Probably want to make a short presentation.
So, basically, what you're saying, the footprint's staying the same?
Yes, sir.
You're just making, correcting the clerical error?
Yes. So, I think when the applicant originally submitted this, the condition read 70,000 square feet.
Like that was a total?
It should have read "per floor." Yes, sir.
Does applicant have anything they'd like to say?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Dale Stewart. I'm a civil engineer with Land Design. We and our planners are responsible for the documents that you've seen so far on Twin Lakes Senior Care. We prepared the plans. We've represented Twin Lakes, Twin Lakes Lake Farm and the applicant on this. And we, I only wanted to make a couple of things. Lee's explained the issue very clearly. It's very simple. We simply made a mistake. While it's an honest error, nevertheless, we needed to come back to you and ask for this amendment. I guess, I just wanted to apologize that we're taking time in an otherwise very busy apparent schedule tonight. And I want to thank the staff, because they have been very willing to help us sort of navigate back to the process. And while it's simple, it just still needs to be corrected. So, we are here asking for your support for the amendment. We appreciate the fact that you've let us come back to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, board, this is, my name is Gene Vaughn. I'm with the Moser Group. I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you briefly about the project. We appreciate greatly your support in the past. It continues to be a project that will care for the lives of people that are aging. It will continue to be a project where folks that will come there to work will have careers that will be enhanced by the ability to care for people in a loving and supporting environment. We are grateful that you've given us the opportunity to address an error that we need to correct in order to be able to move the project forward. And we would appreciate your consideration this evening if you deem it appropriate to act on the text amendment as it is presented before you.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, you may.
Both, you and Mr. Stewart signed up
Yes, sir.
to speak. I assume you don't, you don't need that time now that you've had this opportunity?
Thank you.
Is that a fair statement?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. And no other, no other individuals have signed up to speak on this issue. So, with that being said, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll move on. Next, we have informal comments. Each speaker must address the board from the lectern and begin with their remarks by giving their names, stating whether they are residents of Union County, indicating the municipality within which they reside, if any, and stating the topic about which you intend to speak. Each speaker will have three minutes to make their remarks. A speaker may not yield any of his or her time to another speaker. Speakers may not discuss matters which are subject to public hearing and must be courteous in their language and presentation. Okay? We have Mark Kim's.
I'm with the applicant.
Okay, all right. And Dr. Sandra Burke. How you doing, Ms. Burke?
Doing quite well. Thank you so much, Commissioner.
Do you understand that you can't speak about a public hearing, that even the one that happened last week that we're voting on? Do you understand that?
I'm afraid I don't. So, please clarify for me. I'm certainly going to be...
Because you annotated here that you wanted to talk about Crest Winds.
That's correct.
We'll be voting on Crest Winds tonight. That opportunity was at the public hearing last time.
I understand. Okay, very good.
If you've got anything that is generic that you want to share with us about Union County, we'd love to hear from you.
No, actually not. I was unable to attend the public hearing, and I wasn't aware that this session did not accept comments on that. Not a problem. Thank you so much for the clarification.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, and that's all of our informal comments. Next, we have additions, deletions, and/or adoption of the agenda. Do we have any items that, Commissioner Rushen?
So, there's no opposition if we could add a vote for the CZ 2019-013, Twin Lakes Senior Living Facility Amendment?
And we'll make that at 18A. And also, I'd like to, I'd like to add an item for proclamation for the notary. We have the state notary of the year here with us, and we have a proclamation form. So, I'd like to add that at 17A. Any further changes?
Motion to approve the amendment.
Okay. We have a motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Next, we have the consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent.
Okay. We have a motion. Any discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have 17A, the notary presentation. And one of our very own has been identified as the 2019 Notary of the Year, Judy Chapman. And Judy spent a lot of years teaching notary, right? I'm not going to tell how many, so.
I'm proud of it. About 35.
35 years. That's phenomenal. So, let me read this for you right quick, and then we'll... Whereas Union County notaries public have long held a position of respect and dignity in the state, whereas Union County notaries public are vital to domestic and international business transactions for our state, and whereas the Union County notaries public provide a valuable community service to the general public, and whereas America's first notary, Thomas Fugill, was appointed on November 7th, 1639, and it, whereas it is recognized that since May 20th, 1775, over 174,000 North Carolina notaries have taken the oath and made the contribution to our state. Therefore, the Union County Board of Commissioners do hereby claim, proclaim, November 7th, Union County Notary Public Day. I'd like to present y'all this talk over here.
Mary took the picture.
So, we're going to use that?
Okay.
Congratulations. I understand you're already missed because of my teaching.
I've been, it's been an experience that everyone should have. I know everyone can't have it, but it's so rewarding to have that many notaries who look to you for advice and consultation. It makes a lot for the notaries of this county, and I want to thank the commissioners for doing this. They do their work tirelessly, endlessly, with little pay, well-known pay, and a little respect. So, this goes a long way in letting those notaries in Union County across the state know that their work is appreciated. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Crystal's integral in our, her process to add the notaries. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I might, Judy was my notary instructor, and she taught my wife, too, and probably a lot of other notaries in this county. And congratulations on your award.
Thank you.
She taught me as well.[995.32][995.32](LAUGHING)
Now that we've given them the presentation, I'd like to have a motion to accept the proclamation.
I'll move.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Appreciate what you do for the county and the state. Next, we have number 18, Old Business, CZ 2019-008, Crest Winds Public Hearing to be held on October 7th, 2019. Lee, would you like to bring us up to speed on this, please?
Yes, sir. Once again, the board conducted a public hearing for the Crest Winds development on October 7th. The board heard a presentation by the applicant. That presentation highlighted the development and discussed the, little discussion on the TIA Transportation Impact Analysis that was done for that development. Board also heard concerns from many of the nearby residents regarding the development. The primary concerns were traffic safety, excuse me, and congestion, stormwater and flooding issues, concerns over the density of the project, and concerns over the consistency with the comp plan. You also heard during staff's presentation that the planning board voted four to three to recommend an aisle of the project. Board members who made that recommendation basically stated that they felt like there was, it would add too much traffic to already overburdened roads, that the project was too dense, and that it was not consistent with the comprehensive plan. If, I do want to read through the conditions, because there are, there are a few. I want to make sure that they get, they get on record in case the board decides to approve it. The site development data, it is approximately 291.3 acre tract. There you can see the tax parcel numbers, what the existing zoning is, which is R-40. They're proposing is R-4 conditional district, is an age-restricted, that says, senior facility, or it's an age-restricted development. Minimum lot size of 4,000 square feet, 4,000 square feet per dwelling unit. 615 units would be the maximum number of units that were allowed. Setbacks for each individual home would be 20 feet from the street, 25 feet from the rear, and five feet on the sides. The first part here describes that this was a, these conditions associated with the rezoning petition filed by culture acquisitions to accommodate development of an age-restricted community, Crest Winds. The zoning district will be governed by the rezoning plan, as well as provisions of the UDO, Union County Development Ordinance. And unless the rezoning plan establishes more stringent standards, the regulations established under R-4 shall govern the development taking place on the site. It does state that the development is subject to the conceptual master plan that was submitted as part of the development application. That was what you just saw on the board previously. The petitioner shall develop the site in a manner generally consistent with the master plan, with the understanding that some minor modifications may be made as long as the ultimate design is consistent with the spirit and intent of the conceptual master plan. The developer will comply with any off-site improvements as required by NC DOT. The developer has agreed to contribute $386,500 to NC DOT toward improvements at the Weddington Road and Potter Road intersection. The development will be phased such that a maximum of 300 units may be constructed prior to any improvements being made at that intersection. After the construction of the 300th unit, or when NC DOT begins the improvement at the Weddington Road-Pater Road intersection, whichever comes first, the developer will contribute the monetary amount to NC DOT as indicated in condition 2B, which is the one where I read $386,500. The northernmost neighborhood entrance shall have a left turn lane and a right turn lane into the development off of Potter Road. The southernmost neighborhood entrance shall have a left turn lane into the development off Potter Road. A sidewalk shall be constructed along the front edge of Potter Road, as well as on both sides of all streets within the development. Excuse me. There are some general design guidelines for this development. Principal buildings may use a variety of building materials. Those may consist of a combination of glass, brick, stone, simulated stone, precast stone, architectural precast concrete, synthetic stone, stucco, ephes, cementous siding such as hardy plank or wood. Vinyl as a building material will only be allowed on window soffits and trim features. Accessory structures constructed in developments shall match the architectural style and shall be of the same materials as the principal buildings. Utilities such as meter banks will be screened for visible from public view at grade from public or private streets. And the project will require stormwater detention and water quality measures in accordance with Union County's cluster development option. Landscaping, screening, and lighting will be provided in accordance with the UDO. A proposed sign, a proposed project sign package will be provided to the county. All signs shall meet the requirements of the UDO. The developer will be responsible for installation of all required parking utilities, common areas, open space, and storm drainage, which pertain specifically to this project. Any amendments that may occur to the rezoning plan may be applied for by the owner or owners of the development, and they will be handled in accordance with the provisions of Article 80 of the UDO. But any, most of those amendments, if they were major amendments, would come back to this board. Those would include additions, increases in lot density, number of lots, density, street network movements, things like that. Most of those would come back before the board. There are some minor tweaks. You're not increasing the overall density of the project, but you need to move a few lot lines around and do some things like that. That's stuff that can be handled at the staff level, but a good number, most of those amendments would come back to this board. If the rezoning is approved, all conditions applicable to the development of the site imposed under the rezoning plan will, unless amended, be binding upon and inure the benefit of the petitioner and subsequent owners of the site and the development areas, their respective heirs, successors, and assigns. And then, the development shall be designed as an age-restricted development. The applicant agrees to restrict the occupancy of housing units on the property by restrictive covenant or deed to conformance to the definition of housing for older persons, as defined by the Federal Housing Administration in the North Carolina Fair Housing Act. Such restrictions shall be recorded prior to the issuance of any building permits for the development. A future modification of the recorded restriction shall not be allowed and would be considered a violation of this condition. The owner of the development is responsible for enforcing and complying with this restriction. However, upon request from Union County staff, the owner of the development shall provide to Union County a list of all individual housing units in the development and the age of the occupants associated with each individual housing unit. That's our standard age-restricted condition that we'll place on developments. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Age-restricted. Is that 55?
Yes, sir.
An older?
Yes.
Okay. How about restrictions, because there was earlier discussion of restrictions on residents can't be under the age of 18. I didn't see that there.
Right. So, this, this is the, this is in compliance with the, again, as defined by Federal Housing Administration and the North Carolina Fair Housing Act. Working through this process, the county has felt comfortable with the condition that basically restricts it to 55 and older in an 80 and 80, 20 percent, 80 percent, 20 percent breakdown. We've discussed that breakdown before.
So, that's applicable. 80, 20 is applicable here.
Yes. Anything above and beyond that, which I think the applicant discussed during the public hearing, anything above and beyond that, if they put that in condition, as a condition in their restrictive covenants, or as a deed restriction on the property, that would be something that the neighborhood would be responsible for enforcing. The county would not enforce anything over the 55 and older and 80, 20.
Okay. Do you have anything else, Lee?
No, sir.
Yeah, I'd like to start off by saying, you know, we went to look at a light community on Albemarle Road. It was beautiful. And it was well-done, and it was on a four-lane road with a stoplight for these seniors. I'll be honest with you, your presentation last time really got to me when 55 and older are supposed to sit in a lawn chair and sip on mint juleps. And I don't think that's representative of 55-year-olds any longer. The proposed property on Potter Road is a low-grade two-lane road, already with very heavy traffic. And it was brought to my attention earlier today that in the area, there's another 5,000 projected houses that they want, that wants to be built. And it's not just 84 that's the bottleneck. There's a number of bottlenecks going forth. But DOT promised improvements on 84, and we have seen that doesn't always happen in the timeframes we expect. One thing that concerns me greatly is that Willoughby is the road kind of on the edge of the property. To the entrance is 650 feet. And Chris, could you bring up the picture of the, the first picture for me, please, sir? And this is kind of a picture of, what you need to notice is we're up with the mailbox, which is about 200, the 250 feet from the entrance. There is a hill and kind of a blind curve that, that concerns me greatly, because I can tell you I'm well past 55 years old, and I don't move as fast as I used to. And I think a lot of as older citizens, as they do that, that's kind of a natural, natural fact. So, them pulling out and turning left to go toward Wesley Chapel really exposes them with such a short braking distance. I did some research on, on the web, talking about that particular area is traveled a lot by large trucks, tractor-trailers, and dump trucks. And as you can see, at 55 miles an hour, total stopping distance is about 512 feet. So, if you've got a senior pulling out of this neighborhood with that kind of, and hesitates for whatever, and that truck crest that hill around that curve, it's going to take him 500 foot to stop, that can be deadly. So, that concern is considerable. So that concerns me considerable. Besides the safety concerns, congestion is a major issue in this part of the county. I was advised that there, like I said, there are fifty-six hundred total, which is six hundred of new homes. And it's just, we can't handle the program. And I, I live within a half a mile of this, so it's, it's a road I travel every day. Other thing is that, you know, we've had two major developments, well, I say a major and a minor, that we've turned down because of congestion in this very same area. And I understand that the concept is us old people, we don't drive, but I beg to differ because we do drive, and I talked with a young lady this morning. Her mother's eighty-two years old and lives in a community like that. She's up at six o'clock in the morning going. So I disagree with that concept. Next slide, please, Chris. And this is a concern, and you've heard me speak of this concern, houses ten foot apart. This is a picture of a development in Mooresville that just burnt last week. One of them caught on fire and six, six went up in flames. Ten-foot apart houses are very difficult to get behind, especially if you've got senior citizens that may have difficulty getting out in the, in case of emergency such as a fire. This is a local event that happened, but this has happened numerous places around the country with that kind of, that kind of high density. So, I mean, that's, that's some of the reasons that I cannot support this. I think if in the right place, this is a beautiful development. The one over on Almar Road on a four-lane road is, is, is very nice. I liked it so much, I took my wife back and we're downsizing, got our house to say, to show them, show them the product that they have. It's a beautiful product. But I cannot support in this location because eighty-four, you fix that, and you've got four more intersections that bottleneck you're trying to get out of Union County. Even if you go up and if you turn left on eighty-four and go up into Wesley Chapel, you've got the same concerns. Railroad's been delayed. There's been a lot of delays. All the D O T has put on a whole nine hundred projects. So I think this, in combination with that, it could be a total gridlock in this part of the county. Commissioner Rushing?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is the developer here to answer some of these questions on what they're offering?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner?
It's my understanding from the last public hearing, one hundred percent deed restricted, fifty-five and older, correct?
Absolutely. That's very correct.
As far as the eighteen and under, there's nothing really that I think that we may can enforce with that, and even the eighty, twenty that we can enforce. How do you enforce that in, in your neighborhoods that you've done previously? And how do you plan to enforce it in this one?
It's a good question. Across the board, that eighty, twenty rule, among the other rules, being eighteen and older, and I can, I can get into some details on that, those are deed restricted. They're recorded with the covenants in the neighborhood that are a part of what every one of our residents will sign. They are, they read it, they sign it, and it goes as part of their contract. And that deed restriction is, is recorded with our covenants and restrictions at the county.
Sir, will you state your name, please, and your position with it?
Absolutely. Excuse me. It's Ben Stevens. I'm the Director of Development with Culture Homes here in Charlotte.
Okay.
Thank you for clarifying that. The, the point with being recorded, I think, is, is just like anything else is recorded at the county at that level, it needs to go through this body or other bodies like this for proper, if, if any amendment was to be made to that, for proper review, for proper approval. It's not something that just anybody can make that change and, and make it go away.
Are you familiar with the legal contract that they're signing? Who's responsible for taking action? Is it true that the homeowner is responsible for taking action against the person that's eighteen years and under?
Well, if, if somehow that person moves into the neighborhood, if someone's eighteen, younger than eighteen years old, and that person is deemed to be permanently in that community, the H O A takes action on that. The homeowners association takes action on that. That's the governing body. Once we, as a developer and the declarant, have moved through that community, the H O A takes over that responsibility and will then hold that person accountable to be removed.
I'll clarify with our attorney if I can. What is your understanding of previous contracts?
That is consistent with the covenants and restrictions that I've reviewed in another jurisdiction. In fact, the draft that I looked at not only indicated that the homeowners association was responsible for taking that action, but got consent from the property owners to act as their attorney in fact in taking that action against somebody who was deemed to be residing there outside of the covenants and restrictions.
Is, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. When we looked at this neighborhood, and we've, we've heard, and we've had emails, we've had discussions with people, I've had several discussions, and, and when I gave them the either or, when you look at senior citizens, senior living, traffic patterns, and, and one, one thing we need to be very careful as a board is discussing the capabilities of senior citizens driving or sixteen-year-olds driving. I think that when we look at the, the two, when we could have single-family home, four-bedroom homes, five-bedroom homes by right on R forty zoning clustered, and then we have the same situation wherever we have senior citizens who are traveling different hours of the day, who don't have to get out, the average age is sixty-eight, I understand?
That's right. In our communities, typically, that's right.
You know, one of the things that said about five thousand homes coming to that area is fifty-six hundred homes that are not permitted and pending already that, that are available in the Twelve Mile Creek Sewer Plant. I got that information from our staff today. And so basically, if we wanted to, for the next few years until we have the next expansion of that sewer plant from seven and a half million to nine million gallons per day, there are fifty-six hundred taps basically for four-bedroom homes. Those bed, four-bedroom homes are going to take up either fifty-six hundred acres of land at R forty, or they can be used in cluster developments. These two programs we got on tonight will handle about eight hundred, six hundred for this, and then a hundred and eighty for the other development. So by clustering those, by going and, which could be clustered anyways, the look of it's not going to change, it's just the number of houses that go on that property. But the number of bedrooms is what I'm interested in. The number of bedrooms, you have one, two vehicles out of each of these houses versus could be three, four vehicles out of, out of a by-right subdivision on the same property. So I appreciate what you're doing. I appreciate the amount of money that's going to bring to the schools, the lack of effect that's going to have on the school system itself. When you could be looking at, you're looking at zero by your contract allowed under eighteen years of age. You're looking at the alternative being two hundred fifty, three hundred houses, each with one and a half children from each house is the, I think, the going number now. So you're looking at three hundred plus children in a by-right neighborhood on that same property. So I applaud what y'all have done. I think that the product that you're putting out is a product that's going to help that area, not hurt, it's going to help the county. There are houses coming, and if you use all the R forty zoning in the world, you're going to look at least in the next few years, fifty-six hundred acres being swallowed up by development that could be used in projects like this. So I'm supportive of it, and I would make the motion with the conditions you put on that we accept the rezoning.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This, this is one of those projects that I really struggle with for many of the things that Commissioner Helms pointed out, as well as many of the things that Commissioner Rushing mentioned. And we receive a lot of emails, we see a lot of back and forth, and so if you'll bear with me, I want to just make a few comments relative to my feelings on the project and how I came to my conclusion. So bear with me, and I'm one of those seasoned citizens, so I tend to like to write my information down, so I'll be succinct in my comments and not begin to ramble, if that's okay. I'm, I'm fast approaching my ninth year as a county commissioner, elected to represent Union County. And those people represent a vast dichotomy of culture, intellect, belief, and opinion. I've often said that governing is a struggle between selfish interest and public interest. And one of the greatest struggles for an elected official is to avoid the emotional tug created by the desires of individuals in order to be objective and act on fact and logic relative to an issue. Several arguments have been lodged regarding this rezoning, and I'd like to address a couple of those. Schools, Union County is noted for having an exemplary public education system and is one of the major factors driving population growth in our county. Practically every project that comes up, there's a discussion over its impact on the schools. My question becomes, do schools dictate development, or does development dictate schools? It's the responsibility of the school board to manage the school system and the responsibility of the Board of County Commissioners to fund that system. In a growing county like Union, it's naive to think that present conditions will remain static. Redistricting, mobile classrooms, expansions, and new construction are simply a fact of life in a burgeoning community like Union. Agriculture and open space. My first four-H project when I was eight years old was a Hampshire gilt, which is a female pig, for those of you from Loma Linda, as, as Rush Limbaugh likes to say. And I purchased that pig from Pearl Winchester, whose farm was right where Waxall Methodist Church is on Highway sixteen. And then I came back as a young field crops agent in nineteen eighty-two, harvested corn plots out there in that same area. And so for those people that have contacted me and talk about their tenure here, I just want you to know I'm probably up on most of you. Close to twenty years ago, in serving as county extension director, I presented a program at Rolling Hills Country Club to address development. It's called Green Development. Among the speakers I brought in were Randall Aron discussing conservation subdivision design, and an ag economist from the University of Georgia who spoke on the cost of development. As a result of that program, the town of Weddington hired Mr. Aron as a consultant, and Union County hired the economist from Georgia to study our development cost. Well, Union County learned that residential growth will not pay for itself, and the town of Weddington instituted cluster development. My intent, and it started the conversation, was to provide some logic along with facts for preserving open space, farmland, and agriculture. Now, what some people have a hard time understanding is that in order to preserve farmland, you have to preserve farming. Farming is a business. In order for it to be sustainable, it requires a profit. In order to be profitable, it often requires adoption of management practices which are found unacceptable by the public: odor, dust, noise, spraying of herbicides and insecticides, and slow-moving machinery on roads. In addition, farming is a high-risk occupation. For many, the only thing they have to show for a lifetime of work is their land. It is sad for me that the one vocation that is responsible for much of the wealth, freedom, and lifestyles we enjoy as Americans has become so underappreciated and in many cases vilified. Traffic, no one denies that traffic in western Union County has become an issue. Unfortunately, in North Carolina, there's an eight-hundred-pound gorilla in the room, and the name is N C D O T. You could love them, hate them, curse them, but if you want road improvements, they're currently the only game in town. And so I find myself tonight faced with making a decision regarding this rezoning petition. To say that I don't want another house in Union County would be foolish, selfish, and unrealistic. Sure, I'd prefer that Union County remain a farming community untouched by development, just like it was fifty years ago, but that's my personal interest, which I have to set aside. I heard Mr. Konigsberg's impassioned plea last time as he quoted Wendell Berry. One of my favorite Wendell Berry quotes is, "We live in a world where far too many would rather pay for something to kill the dandelions than appreciate the dandelions." Well, like Sammy and Wendell, I'm a dandelion man myself. But then there's property rights. History suggests that Thomas Jefferson changed the wording of the Declaration of Independence from "life, liberty, and property" to "life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness" in order to be more inclusive. I have long been a proponent of the concept that he who governs least governs best. Frederick Hayek is quoted as saying, "The system of private property is the most important guarantee of freedom, not only for those who own property, but scarcely less for those who do not." Classic liberalism, laissez-faire capitalism, call it what you wish, I'm sure I'll be called worse. Now, I don't personally know, the owners of this property have never, to my memory, ever met them. And although I've met the developer, as I was offered a tour of their similar facility in Mecklenburg, I do not know them personally. The point being that they, the developer and the property owner, may be millionaires or they may be paupers. Whatever the case, it is irrelevant. Bill Fischel, Dartmouth Economics Professor, stated that "All zoning is fiscal in nature." That is to say, local governments use zoning to preserve and enhance the local property tax base, an opinion for which I tend to agree. The respective property will not remain in agriculture unless a farmer or a land conservancy wants to up the bid. By right, it can be developed as R A forty with single-family homes complete with ingress and egress on to Potter Road, and with a strong likelihood of an impact on the school population. The zoning change to accommodate an age-restricted community will have its share of negative as well as positive impacts. In the long run, I believe it is the best alternative to preserve and enhance our tax base, and I will be voting in support of the motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right. I still don't have an understanding of the eighty, twenty because what Lee read was that it was going to follow the state statue and, and things of that nature. So I'm not, I'm not convinced it's a hundred percent. I know that I have lived in way too many developments with the homeowners association. And like I said, county will not govern whether or not they comply. It'll be up to the actual H O A. And I know, I live in a community of H O A right now, they don't enforce the covenants that they need to. Now, they'll tell me if I got grass in my flower bed, but they won't enforce the major covenants. So we have a motion to approve. So any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, we need to have the motion to approve, the request read into the record, and then if, if it's voted on to approve, the amendment is consistent with the plan.
Okay.
I mean, that motion to adopt the consistency statement?
Yes.
Approving the rezoning petition CZ two zero one nine zero zero eight. Rezoning properties appearing on tax map is partially one of the serious six, dash zero two seven, dash zero zero seven, and zero six, zero zero nine, zero zero eight. In Sandy Ridge Township, properties from R forty to R four CZ as consistent with the current plan, and approve the rezoning petition CZ twenty nineteen zero zero eight. Rezoning properties from R forty to R four CZ, and approve the conditions accepted by the item.
That's efficient. Anything else? All in favor of the motion to adopt?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Next, we have item eighteen A, and that's to address CZ twenty nineteen dash oh one three, the Twin Lake Senior Living Motion to correct the clerical error in it.
Motion to approve and adopt the applicable consistency statement.
Is that okay? Pass it down to Frank. I'll let him read it in.
That's the wrong one. That was the wrong one.
Lynn, Lynn said that was the wrong one. This is...
All right. Motion to adopt the consistency statement, approving rezoning conditions CZ twenty nineteen zero one three to amend the conditions previously approved rezoning position CZ twenty eighteen zero zero four as consistent with the current plan, and approve rezoning position CZ twenty nineteen thirteen to amend the conditions, additional rezoning position CZ twenty rezoning position CZ 2019-004.
Okay. We have a motion to approve. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, item 19, the Comprehensive Audit Financial Statement Presentation. Jeff, you gonna help us with that?
Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, it's my pleasure to come for you tonight, and I believe this is my eighth caffer that we are presenting to you. Our staff has worked for the last two and a half to three months finalizing your 2019 financial statements, so this is the end of the 2019 financial calendar. Tonight, we have Dan Gargiti with us, who is with Cherry Beckett. So I'll let him tell you what the final outcome of the audit was, but I'll let little bit out it was positive, so we'll let him go ahead and present, do his presentation. In the near future, we will bring back to you the financial results as a foundation for the upcoming budget cycle. So Dan's gonna kind of go through their work and what they found. So Dan, if you wanna... Dan Gargiti, the Cherry Beckett.
Good evening. This is my fifth year actually on the audit engagement for Union County. You're actually one of the first clients when I moved from Florida to here that I joined the firm up here in North Carolina. So tonight, I'm going to go over with you kind of the role of us as an external auditor of you as a county, the key highlights from our audit, what you're interested in terms of the results, internal controls, any significant audit areas that we identify and test during our audit, and then leave some time for any questions that you may have. First, for the role of the external auditor, our audit is to plan and perform procedures to obtain reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free from material misstatement. And so we do that by auditing in accordance with generally accepted auditing principles, that the financial statements are in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Our results is to express an opinion on those financial statements and provide an unmodified opinion, if so warrants. For our required communications, that is one of our requirements, is to present to the board those changes that have occurred year over year, any estimates that are significant that are included within the financial statements, and any journal entries that we may have that weren't corrected or uncorrected as part of our audit. In terms of the key highlights, as Jeff had mentioned, you have received an unmodified opinion. That is the cleanest opinion that you can receive under our standards. You receive that on your financial statements, on your, what we call, governmental auditing standards report, internal controls over financial reporting, and then also over your federal and single audit, which is a single audit that is of all your federal and state dollars that you spend at the county. In terms of the internal controls, we found no significant efficiencies or material weaknesses to report on in our report. And from a single audit perspective, the programs that we have tested this year is Medicaid, as is tested almost every year, the Aging Cluster, which is your food nutrition senior centers, CDBG, which is the Community Development Block grant, lottery funds that you receive, and then also the new community shelter program that was constructed in the past year. In terms of our single audit, we had two findings that we had a report on. One was on Medicaid. I will say that all the findings in the Medicaid did not result in improper eligibility issues, so there was no question cost or anything that needs to be paid back to any federal or state agency, but there were mainly documentation issues. And the other finding we had was on that Aging Cluster, on a subrecipient monitoring and making sure you had the proper documentation in-house that those subrecipients were being properly monitored. In terms of the other required communications, you had no significant policy changes, but you did implement one new GASB, GASB-88, which just related to some additional disclosures within your financial statement for direct placements or direct borrowings that you may have, that the public might not have access to the information of those debt agreements. In terms of your estimates, we had estimates that are very similar to the prior years. You have your estimate on your allowance for receivables, your depreciation of your assets, your OPEB, elders, rod, Leosa pension plans. That is the result of actuaries that we use that estimate the liabilities on those plans. And then you have your derivatives and your landfill estimate for closure, post-closure. In terms of journal entries, we had no journal entries during our audit that we had to post as part of the audit, or any entries that we consider to be uncorrected misstatements that management may have passed on. So basically, what that means is that the trial, the information provided to us at the beginning of the audit is what we actually opined on and ultimately came to the conclusion on, in the comprehensive annual financial report that you are seeing. None of those numbers have changed from what we originally saw. In terms of internal controls, we are required to identify any significant transaction cycles that the county may have and walk through the controls that you have at the county to make sure that the controls are appropriate to avoid any misstatements in the financial statements. We do that by obtaining an understanding of those controls and walking through any key controls in those areas with our normally receivables, revenue, payroll, and accounts payable, and expenditures. For testing of internal controls, we do that for reliance on our opinion and also for compliance in relation to our single audit. In terms of our journal entries, we do what we call a data dump, which is provide all the journal entries the county had posted in the current year and bucket, put them into different buckets, whether they be weekend entries, large round numbers, entries that have correct or fraud in the description that we want to isolate and actually look at, and we mine for any of those unusual transactions. And so when we did our journal testing, we found no issues with any of the journal entries that were posted during the year that we had tested and that they were properly approved. And then lastly here, from information technology control standpoint, we have an IT auditor who comes in and looks at the general computer controls to make sure the information we are getting from your computer information systems is reliable and something that we can use to support our opinion when we're doing our tests. In terms of those significant audit areas, as I alluded to earlier, receivables, revenue, payables, and expenditures, and payroll are really your significant ones, and then there's also debt, pensions, and OPEB. We test these from a variety of ways, mostly from confirmation with third parties. Also, we provide some predictive analytics based on the assumptions over the year that make sure we understand the increases or decreases in your account balances are in line with our expectations. And then doing test of details, which is actually looking into the transactions individually and looking at certain sampled items to make sure that they are appropriately recorded and approved. And then from summary here, we have, again, an unmodified opinion, no journal entries that were posted, good internal controls overall at the county level. And there was two single audit findings, and we also had one management letter comment. A management letter comment did not rise to the level of a comment that needed to go into the actual audit report, but it was something that we felt that was important to put in a letter to the board. And that one comment was about your reviews of Medicaid. You are doing quality reviews of your Medicaid files, but there was two that were missing out of the 40 we tested, and so we just want to make sure that those controls are being adhered to and make sure that you're keeping on file all the reviews. And again, just a full cooperation from management. I want to thank Jeff, Debbie, and everyone else in finance and DSS as well, as we spent a number of weeks out there doing our Medicaid testing as well. So, thank you. I'll leave that open for any questions or comments.
We have any questions? Thank you for such a thorough process.
Thank you.
Jeff, you have anything else?
Mr. Chairman, if you'll indulge me for a moment?
Yes, sir.
I just want to recognize our staff. Dan mentioned Debbie Cox, Beverly Lyles, and some of the other folks in finance and the management team as the whole organization. As you know, the internal control framework and the controls in the organization are management's responsibilities, but it's important to establish a culture of internal control. So I just want to recognize all the folks in the county that have that, that have that in their mind and that participate in that process every year and create that environment. So as mentioned, this is our, my eighth year here, and the eighth audit we've done, and they've all been clean. So that's a significant accomplishment for the county, and the citizens can rest assured that as we go through this process, that management has the internal control framework and properly accounting for the funds of the county on their mind. So I just wanted to recognize all the folks that are involved in that. It's not just a finance effort, but it's a global effort with the county.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Next is item 20, the Short Line Water Extension Task Order 2017-10. Mr. Manager?
Mr. Chair, the short line water extension program is ready to move forward for design, permitting, and bidding. Hungy, if you would like to come and talk about the two action items that...
I'll take that. Very good. So what you have, Mr. Chairman and Board members, you have here a contract, this is actually a task order, same difference, for WK Dixon, which is for design permitting and bidding for the short line extension backlog project. That's the money you've set aside, about $5 million for. It's estimated that 20 projects will likely be able to be constructed with that amount of money. The staff took your recommended criteria for how to score projects and rank them. We took that, took all the projects based on whether they were health and safety risk, customers per mile, the whole list of those criteria, ranked those, put them in order, then estimated the cost, came up with a project list, and have defined this into essentially two separate projects. Number one, first one would be the top priority project on the ranking list would be its own separate design permitting and bid project, and then the rest of the projects would then be lumped into remaining design permitting and bidding. Ultimately, the goal is to take those, that set, and actually split them into geographic areas to hopefully speed up construction over time of that larger number of projects. So the request is for the board to consider approving this as shown, with, again, the first top-ranked priority project would begin design bidding, design permitting and bidding first. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Is that what I remember, the 20 projects that came up on the list, is that Pine Forest the number one?
Pinewood Forest was, it was and is the number one ranked project, yes, sir.
So it'll be designed, go through the process by itself, basically, to come to fruition, and the others are lumped in together?
That is correct, yes, sir.
One of the statements that was made to, and we've had this conversation, Brian, but I want to, for the record, that we had a list, the board's already voted on the list on priorities based on the health and safety risk, but what was communicated, some of our citizens that would hire a contractor and let him decide, him or her decide which ones they want to do. I thought our list was instructions on how to get, you know, ones that need to be done first due to health and safety issues.
Yes, sir.
So is that, is that the way the group, grouping's gonna go?
So, understand, the grouping is really based on geographic area. It will, obviously, they'll be numbered within the geographic area, and it is intended that they start with the next project on the list, but there are only three geographic areas, so number two and number three and number four would likely start, and after that, it's really based on geography. So it's within that geographic area. It's not necessarily going from four to 12, back to five. It's within that geography.
Are there gonna be separate vendors performing this work in each geography?
It will be up to the bidding, so obviously, we're gonna have three different bid packages for that lot, for the geography, geographic areas. A contractor could bid on more than one, but they'd have to have the resources and the equipment and the manpower to actually do both of them simultaneously. We anticipate we'll actually have three different companies doing that work, but you could have one that has enough, they have enough resources, they could do two at one time.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Commissioner Raitt?
I would like to thank Public Works staff. We've come a long way in 11 months. I mean, we've went from, we've just got to where I think we need to be, and I'm very proud of Brian Matthews-Hungy and all his supporting people. I'd also like to thank all the commissioners for being involved in this. I think it's something we'll be proud of when we're older, and I know we can't go everywhere, but at least we have put a framework in place that people can work with. And I'd like to make a motion to approve this expenditure.
Okay. Any other discussion?
There's two action requests.
Okay. Dennis, I want you to read the first one.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to direct staff to amend the language of proposed task order 2017-10 with WK Dixon and Company Incorporated as necessary to ensure that the top-ranked application project on the water line extension for existing lots' priority list is designed and bid prior to the commencement of work on lower-ranked applicant projects contemplated under the task order. And number two, authorize the county manager to approve task order 2017-10 with WK Dixon and Company Incorporated as necessarily amended in the amount of $486,900 pending legal review.
Okay. Any further discussion? Have a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None. Okay. Thank you. I agree with Commissioner Raitt's statement. Y'all have stepped up to the plate, and I know we had conversations, and your solution with doing it in two different phases, addressing that highest priority first, is much appreciated. Y'all, y'all did a good job.
Public Works staff did all the work.
All right. Now we go for the county managers' comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to remind the board that we have a joint meeting coming up with the Indian Trail Town Council, November the 7th, beginning at 5:00 PM. There'd be meal provided. You have been provided with also an agenda that was sent out at the end of last week listing all of the items for discussion that evening. The meeting is expected to last about two hours. Additionally, I would just like to point out, even though we've had some rain over the past week, prior to that, we've had some really, really dry conditions in the county. This resulted in at least three barn fires over the past month. The reason I point this out is that these fires have created a situation where a number of rural fire departments have had to come together and pool their collective resources in order to control these, and I would classify these as large fires in our county. As latest today, we had a barn that burned with something like 1,000 round bales and 2,000 square bales or something of that magnitude, required eight, and I emphasize rural, rural fire departments, volunteers to respond, and some of those fire departments came from outside of Union County to help fight those fires. That event, that type of event has been repeated at least three times in the last month. We need to be mindful of the resources it takes to fight rural fire and the resources our rural fire departments need, but I would like to thank them for their cooperation and collaboration and pulling together to pool their resources to keep both property and life safe in Union County. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. All right. Commissioner Raitt?
No comments.
Commissioner Simpson?
No comments.
Commissioner Russian?
No comments.
Commissioner Aitken?
No comments.
And I have no comments, and can I have a motion to adjourn? Okay. All in favor? Okay. Thank you.